Let's go. Roll call to the chairman of the board.
Ms. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Bradford?
Here.
Mr. James Green?
Here.
Mr. Derek Green?
Present.
Mr. Watt?
Here.
You're all present. Let us stand for prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we give thanks to you for another opportunity to be reflective of your will for this community. We ask that you will help us to follow your lead and we will be so careful to give you the glory in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, which is safe, one nation, united in God, equal and just.
I wish to welcome you here to this call meeting as a mayor and board of aldermen. Are there any comments as they relate to items on the agenda?
I have one, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Um, on the agenda for, uh, um, discussion for one effort to recruit for the police department?
Yes, sir.
Can they turn microphones off?
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Testing.
Okay, for support effort to recruit for police department?
Yes, sir.
That's not all. I think when I spoke, she asked me if I want to speak about personnel. I didn't want to speak about personnel, I just want to speak about the police department in all, not just recruiting for. So do we need to mean it?
Well, um, they like for us to be transparent in specifically what you want to talk about, so just a broad subject. That kind of puts us with what all do you want to talk about since the agenda has gone out?
The, um, the police department. It's, I mean, it's more than one thing I want to speak about.
Do you, okay, should we expand the agenda?
If we need.
Then we need to be specific in those areas that relates to transparency.
Okay.
We want to discuss that resolution that was, um, passed regarding the police department and I don't have the number.
That was one thing.
Are you speaking of the patrol resolution? The patrol resolution?
When, when we entered, I guess we entered into contract with the.
With the Mohous Parish Sheriff Department?
Yes.
So you probably need to do an expansion, a motion, a vote to say what you're going to speak on.
Okay, so I, I make the motion that we expand the agenda to speak about the contract with the Mohous Parish Sheriff Department.
One second.
Public comments? There are none?
We got a bold one, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So we will expand the agenda. Where is that? Okay. Um, item number five, so we'll just expand that particular discussion to accomplish the resolution. Okay.
I, I have one announced, but I know it's not on agenda, but, um, May thirtieth, the Mohous Council on Asian Avenue Senior Day, um, from ten AM to twelve PM. At the Mohous Council on Asian. May thirtieth, it's senior day at the Mohous Council on Asian from ten AM to twelve PM. Oh, that's.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that takes us to item number four, discussion, attorney general opinion. City attorney, item.
Diddy, Mr. Green, I'm sorry.
Okay, he, I think he's going to default to me though.
Right.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it's on the agenda for all of us to speak about it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, um, regarding the appointment of our city attorney, I went back in, in the records, um, my late husband, Martin Moore, submitted questions to the attorney general's office. This is dated January twelfth, twenty eighteen, regarding the same scenario that we are in now. Um, he did receive an answer for it and this is opinion seventeen dash zero one three nine from the attorney general's office. And it says, dear Mr. Moore, our office has, has received your request for an opinion regarding aspects of the mayor of Bastrop's authority. Specifically, you have asked about the extent of the mayor's authority regarding the hiring of a city attorney. The answer, the appointment of a city attorney is governed by section fifteen of the Bastrop Charter, which provides that the mayor, with advice and consent of the board of aldermen, may annually appoint an attorney at law or attorneys at law for the municipality, prescribe his or her duties and fix the form and extent of his or her compensation. When a law is clear and unambiguous and its application does not lead to absurd consequences, the law shall be applied as written. Section fourteen of the charter requires that in all cases, a majority of the aldermen elected shall be required to transact business. Therefore, a majority of the city council is necessary to provide advice and consent to confirm the mayor's appointment of a city attorney. As the city charter provides, the city attorney may only be appointed with the advice and consent of the city council. The council's approval is necessary for the current city attorney to continue his service. Without their consent, the mayor's appointment is invalid and his chosen attorney cannot act as the city attorney. Again, this is opinion seventeen dash oh one three nine.
So, so, so the reason that.
Mr. Green?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Green, go ahead.
So the reason that this, this item is on the agenda today because I'm pretty sure everybody been aware of that it was flowing around via social media and so it was, it was in need for us to address the situation.
Yes, sir.
So that's, that's why we're here now because we facing with the same, pretty much the same situation that support that attorney general opinion. So, cause we had a standstill now because, uh, we waiting on attorney general opinion, but we already have one in place for the same exact situation. So we need to, you know, we need to resolve this so we can move forward.
Mr. Watt?
Oh, I disagree with what, 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 um, Ms. Johnson's done. We stopped kicking the can down the road and we already got an opinion. So, I'm not quite sure that opinion had changed.
Mr. Green? Mr. Jay Green?
I concur with Mr. Green's assessment.
I encourage, like, as a movement, if we accept this opinion, like, you'd motion to accept the opinion.
This is for discussion only.
I want to get discussed. I, I encourage what's been said so far.
So it's, it's on the agenda for discussion only? Do we need to go ahead? Do we need to expand it for action?
Can you undo that in a call meeting?
This is a, I don't really know, we've never done it before. This is, I was, I wanted to discuss attorney general's opinion, that's what I told, that's what I put on there. So.
Never say, we can, we can just put it back for action on a regular count to me.
It's just for discussion.
I mean, y'all said you want to discuss it, it's an opinion that y'all discussed it, so.
What, you want to do the agenda for the next meeting time? Action at the next meeting.
Sure.
Okay, those are all in comments? Put your hand.
I mean, that was, that was all for me. Anybody else?
Okay. Thank you. I'm aware of that, been aware of it. Matter of fact, there's another one out there as well. Um.
Do you, do you mind, do you mind the next ticket count for me? Can that opinion be in the, in the city council packages as well?
I'm, I'm aware of the one that Mrs. Taffin just read and there is another one that was, um, issued in twenty eighteen, I believe. That one is twenty seventeen and there's another one.
This one twenty eighteen.
That one's twenty eighteen. Okay, then the other one, there's another one that's subsequent to that one. Okay.
What issue?
There is another one. Sir?
There is another one issued? You said that's another one?
There, there are two out there.
What was that? We were not on issue.
I have it back at the day.
Can we have both of them in the package?
Yeah, both of them in there.
Okay.
I get a point of information, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Who was it submitted by?
The second one was, um, submitted by a former mayor, him cotton.
And it's, you still waiting on the opinion?
I have not received a response to the, the one that was sent this year. No, I have not.
We just need to have it in the, in the package.
He said it was done. You say you waited on the one that was done this year?
I have not received it.
So you, you sent one off this year? You said, you spoke with Mr. Cotton, we been in office for almost two years. So when was it submitted?
It was submitted in February, I believe, somewhere during the time that this council prior to your being seated requested an attorney general's opinion.
So it was sent off during this, this year?
Yes, yes, sir. It was.
The one by Mr. Cotton?
No, the one, I have not received one. No.
Alright, so you, what you, what you saying prior to this administration? Mr. Cotton?
There are two attorney generals' opinions.
And he sent one off?
Yes.
In regard to same matter?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But, but then also two with this administration, you sent one off with?
And he asked.
And then he asked someone I was with?
That's correct. Okay, alright. Um, item number five, supporting the efforts to recruit for the police department and what else did you say, Mr. Green? Mr. Uh, D. Green?
Uh, we talked for, what we speaking about today?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the contract with the Mohous Sheriff Department?
Contract with the Mohous, okay.
Ms. Moore, I'm sorry, any way we can get a competent resolution because I, I don't have it.
I'll go get it.
Okay.
So do we, do we, is this, at this moment, do we talk about what we need to talk about?
You can go ahead. I don't see any reason to delay.
Uh, one of my, I, I have a free question, Ms. Angela, maybe you can answer for me. At the rate that we going by closing up the police department at six, how long can we afford to pay the Mohous Sheriff Department?
I don't know, it just depends on how much we spend and how much our revenue is. The, the, the slotted that we budgeted or those vacant seats that we would have paid even salary and benefits. So those, and they are going over there. So it just, I don't know how we can afford. I mean, I, I can't answer that.
Okay, can you tell me how much do a entry level of police mate coming in, an hour?
They pay, uh, thirteen, twelve plus, uh, six hundred dollars supplemental pay.
And tell me how much is the highest, not, you don't have to give the person name, how much is the highest first?
No, I can't because I've been running numbers today, so I can't tell you what the highs should be right now.
So is it, is we paying the Mohous Sheriff Department's police officers to come out between thirty-eight and forty-two dollars an hour?
Their raise.
Plus overtime?
We absolutely, they, they're paying overtime, yes, sir. Because they're working their shift and then they're coming over here and working our shift overtime.
Cause the reason I'm asking because it seem like to me with the numbers, calculations, for one, police officers come out for the sheriff's department, pretty much like two to three officers for the rest of police department. And you do an entry level of police officer at thirteen dollars an hour and and we have a sheriff department making anywhere between thirty-eight and forty-two dollars an hour, there could have been three to four police officers, excite the rate.
I hadn't run, I hadn't run those numbers yet.
I did a little bit, but no, we don't. What, what, where is that money coming from?
The general fund.
The general fund, that's what I want to say.
Sales tax, any other benefits and property tax.
That was budgeted, right?
Absolutely.
So it wasn't budgeted for the police department, but you spent it out of the general fund?
It was, it was.
It was also budgeted for?
All, all the police, all the city itself, everybody's pay comes out of the general fund. Whether it's parks, police, fire, you, your salary, all comes out of the general fund.
Mr. Green, Mr. Uh, D. Green?
So we budgeted and it's coming out the general funds, meaning that when we tell, when we stated that we don't have the funds to give the police departments to raise and order for us to be in competitive with other areas, then, then here we are paying the Mohous Sheriff's Department forty dollars an hour. It look like to me we had the funds to increase the pay to recruit more police officers that want to come this way.
We're, we don't have the, we don't have the people to hire because they're not coming.
Right, they're not coming also because of the pay we starting off with.
So what, what do you want to give them?
I, I mean, I, I can say a number, but I want to make sure, you know.
Like, I, I agree with some starts, let's start with something.
Let's do a feasibility study.
Just let me know. That's what we're working right now to see what, what, what can we afford.
Cause I, cause I, you know, I, I sit here in my seat, I, I do say that, you know, thirteen dollars an hour for a police department putting their life on the line, not enough money.
I, I agree.
But, but, but here we are, then after six o'clock, we paying a police officer forty dollars to come out. So for us to say, for us to not want to do all the diligence to raise the rate for our police department is like a slap in their face. So, cause the, the reason we don't have police officers is because we can't compete. So why would I come here for thirteen dollars an hour when I can go right up the road for sixteen or seventeen dollars an hour? But apparently we can pay sixteen, I'm not saying this number, we can pay sixteen, seventeen dollars an hour, but when we paying?
I didn't say we could pay. I'm just saying we're in a position now, we've got to pay.
We, we got to pay, right.
There, there is a difference.
That's, we, we have to pay because, because, because at this rate, if we don't do anything for, have a, not a police department recruiting, we can continue to pay the sheriff department for this amount because we need, we need someone to patrol, correct?
I believe I heard Mrs. Taffin, was it something that you?
And, and this is something, um, that we had to do at the hospital. We were using a lot of contract nurses. We had to do a feasibility study and we had to adjust pay rates. That way we could, uh, entice staff to come to the hospital. Because if I can go to the sheriff department and work for four or five more dollars an hour, that's most likely what I'm gonna do.
Uh, twenty-three dollars an hour, twenty-seven dollars, twenty-seven dollars more.
Well, I, I think we at least need to adjust close to the sheriff department, at least so we can be able to recruit.
Cause I think all of our goals, um, speaking for me, is to see our police, for, police department back up and going, um, twenty-four hours instead of from six to six. Especially with these last few incidents in regards to the police, the sheriff department. And then, you know, we need them because we don't have the people to patrol. But if we can, if we can put a, a, a rate out there to make people want to come, then I think it'll do us.
We just need to find the right that we can afford. We don't want to promise something and not be able to do it.
We doing it now, though. We're just doing it now.
Yes, point of information, you said a forty. Right now, when the police department shut down at six o'clock, it's temporary, but it's really permanent. Because the longest we shut down at six o'clock, we're gonna continue to pay the sheriff department forty-two, thirty-eight dollars an hour to patrol. Am I not right?
I, I don't have the figures in here, so I'll go on the record at that.
Okay, well, you don't have to.
I can take your word. Apparently he saw something.
Okay, well, we paying them a pretty good sum. As long as the police department is down, they gonna continue to patrol at the rate that they we paying right now, right?
I'm sure he's not gonna make that decision.
So we, we gonna, we gonna pay them at that rate. So what I'm saying is, as long as the police department is shutting down, we gonna continue to pay that rate. So it's temporary, but it's permanent. Because as long as you shut down at six, you gonna continue to pay them. So why not increase the pay of the interest level, the control ones and therefore we'll resolve, the problem, the problem will resolve itself if we, if we raise the pay instead of just, because if we don't, we gonna continue to pay thirty-eight dollars, forty, forty-two dollars, whatever it is. It's like three or four times amount where you, you can pay a person that's starting off. Well, well, nine, it's, you, you know, it's a lot of things you can do to entice people to want to come this way. Um, we can do, but we have to do it collectively. I, I, everybody pull in different ways.
Ma'am, can I, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Watt, can you speak?
Do you think that we need to revisit this contract and look at other options? I'm not saying we gonna throw this contract away, but maybe get a cup, a couple of city councilmen together with the police team, maybe someone from the mayor's office and we look at the budget of different ways of trying to recruit and maintain some of the officers we have already. Cause who knows, could we have offered that same package to some of our own police officers? I'm just saying, at least keep it around and see if it would be feasible to see if we could come up with some type of ways of, uh, recruiting, maintaining, whatever we need to do. But we've certainly talked about it for all night and nothing would be resolved.
Yes, sir.
But we probably need to meet a couple of city councilmen. Or we see somebody from the mayor's office, from the central office, so we could go over and look at some different options. Because like I said, we could stay here all night, go over, we can what? What look like, maybe we could offer the same plans that they own office, they might jump at it. I don't know. Look at, look at, that's my suggestion.
Yes, sir. I, I've written your note, um, suggestion down. Any other?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Bradford?
For some clarity, uh, Mrs. Goldman, you said they have been paying out of the twenty-two and twenty-three year budget. The amount of the budget was allocated to the police department?
I don't have those. I didn't bring up that.
I said one point five million.
But we, it's salaries itself, we budget those vacancies and their benefits. So it's in the police budget as salaries.
But it's coming out of the police budget, money with budget for that year in term.
Yes, sir. And it's coming out because the patrol is coming, patrol is placed, so it comes out of their budget.
Okay. Do you know how much they received so far out of that budget since?
No, sir, I don't. I don't have that. I was told that y'all were gonna discuss on recruiting. I didn't have no information for this girl.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Any other? Yes, sir. Any other comments?
Yes, one more comment related to this. Um, and I know when we spoke to Chief Reed last time, he, he informed us that he had eight full-time officers. I don't know if it's changed since then. And my suggestion was in our finance meeting that we could run, in my opinion, it's my opinion, at least two, two of our officers per shift and bring in the sheriff department because we will never say we don't need them. But bring them in and maybe as a third man, if we need a fourth man, we could use them as a fourth man. But keep our police department open and operating and then our people take control of the shifts and fill in with the sheriff department.
One other question you've got. Mr. Jay Green?
When we paid the sheriff department, whatever figures it was, thirty, forty, two dollars an hour, and it was allocated for the police department, whatever the figures was, did they budget suffer? Did they come out in the red or did they come in under budget?
Right now, they're, they're in, they're in the green. I mean, they're not in the red.
Uh, that's my point.
Because we have those, that we have those slots available with the benefits. We're not having to pay social security. We're not having to pay fire and we're not having to pay retirement and we're not paying our rate of the, uh, overtime.
So, but if you giving police officers raises, we already paying that, right?
Our man, we're, we're doing those benefits.
What I'm saying is all, they, it's already allocated for the ones that's already with the police department. So that, that's not going adversely to affect the budget either, right?
Well, it's, it's not right now. I, I can't say what next year's gonna be because we're still working on it.
Okay, but, but from past practice from last year, you paid that amount to the sheriff department, right?
We did, but last year wasn't full year either. We started in April and our, our budget ended June.
Well, it goes.
This is our.
On a quarter basis. So they came out in the green. We paid all this money, so we came out, they still came out under budget.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Another question. I have another question.
Uh, Mr. D. Green?
You said that, you said that we budget, we going off the absence, the, the, the absent police unit that we have, right? That's where we, we utilize this money from, right? From the police that not on the shift.
We, we did, we budgeted those positions. He had open vacancy, we budgeted benefit for those officers that's on there.
So can you tell me how much is the total officer?
I can't, I can't tell you the budget is, but I, but I, we can get you that. We're, we're still working on the budget. We're still paying on this month, this, this year's budget and we're still working on that to see what's left and over, to see what's left. Because you, whatever's left is what you're gonna spend next year. And then you're guessing on your revenue. We don't want to guess too high because if it don't come in, then you're in a, you're in a bind and can't make payroll. So you don't want to do that. And if you remember, we have a lot of grant money that's also in our budget that is designated for nothing but that. You can't pay salaries on it.
Right, right.
And we also have match money that we have committed. So when you do that, you, you got to go ahead and follow up on what you've got your budget that you matched for. You've already committed to do it. And to get that grant money, you gotta put some of your money in it. So if we're still doing that, yes, everybody deserves it, most definitely. Our police is. I, I'll be the first one to say that. I wouldn't want to put my life on or nobody else's like that. And they are, they're running into danger. Just like our firemen, our firemen are running into fires, building things. Most people are running away from fires, but they're running into the fire. So they all, I mean, all of our employees needs, if we gave one raise since two thousand and six, they all deserve it, every one of them. But the worst thing we could do is promise them and not fulfill it. And then you've got to raise somebody's off and that's not a good place that anybody, and they, y'all don't want to be there and I don't want to be there. The mayor don't want to be there. So it's gotta be realistic. Yes, we would love to pay, if they're paying somebody forty dollars, everyone here would love to pay them forty dollars. But can we do it? We, we can't pay everybody forty dollars a night.
Right, it's like we can't afford to pay the sheriff department.
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
Right, and I agree. I, I, I agree one hundred percent.
I got one of those questions. Uh, Mr. Jay Green, Ms. Angela, was that, was that accounted for when, when y'all did the budget? That we was going to count this for the sheriff department? That we was gonna have to pay those people these thirty dollar hour for to the job? Was that?
No, because I don't really know their budget. Like I say, when we had to.
I'm talking about which.
When we had to do the budget even last year, we didn't have no idea that we would still be in this. We was hoping we would get the people here.
Yeah, that, that.
So, I mean, we didn't know how much and, and I didn't have nothing to go by, only from April and to June thirtieth, that I had even an equal of what it was gonna cost. We've never been in this position before.
And that's, that's my.
The city has never been in this position before.
That's my point. You didn't, you didn't, you didn't foresee this, you, you're right. So when you still under budget, that's what I'm getting at. You didn't foresee it. So you didn't put it in the budget and we still under budget. So that's what I, that's my point. You didn't budget it in.
We didn't have a lot of extra, the, the, we're just, they're there because we didn't fill the positions. And we were able to pay the sheriff department what we needed to pay.
Okay, I believe, uh, council and Bradford?
I received the resolution twenty-three, uh, twenty-two nineteen ninety-three, but I also asked for a memorandum that was signed, a memorandum to go, go with this.
You asked, you asked me? I don't know about memorandums.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that's a memorandum filed, signed by the mayor, uh, and Shad too, concerning, concerning twenty-two nineteen ninety-three.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I'd like to get it, she would be on file.
We, we, we can do that, but she sent a resolution, so that's what I sent.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Ma'am, is it, is it the contract? Because I know contract, you have a start date, the end date.
I don't think that, Mr. Pierre, I don't think there was a contract.
It was.
I'll have to go back and look.
I'm sorry. It, it was a memorandum of understanding signed by Mayor Ali and Shad Mike too.
Yeah, I'll have to go back and look.
And I, I'd like to see it tonight because I have a question about this that we discussed it, you know, a memorandum of understanding. That's, that's what I need.
Okay, any other comments for discussion? Okay, I've made notes from your, your talking points and as we review, we certainly will take your entries under consideration. There are other moving parts and. There are other moving parts, and I'll say this much, back when I was on the city council. There were certain things we did not foresee that happened, then there were things that we did foresee. And one of which was the closing of the jail. We started seeing a trend where it was too, it was not cost effective to continue to run the jail. Because we were spending close to two hundred thousand dollars a year with maybe eighteen prisoners. And when you divide that by per prisoner cost, it was really excessive. So eventually we had to make a change and the sheriff department started, we contracted with them. And of course, we shared your concerns as well, in wanting that police department back up and going. But we had a lot of officers that retired out of the system. And I think we were not recruiting as quickly as they were aging out of the system. And I don't necessarily mean in age, but in number of years of, of service. So we, here we are now, we're looking at not only incentives to make the payment enticing. But sustainability as well, but I made note of all of your points and thank you so much for your comments. Yes, sir, uh, I, I heard Mr. D Green first.
Inside this resolution, it said that, uh, in prison, there are only six officers currently active and available to work four shifts. So is the sheriff department, uh, is that part of the, whatever the resolution, I mean, the contract, that they're doing four shifts or they're doing one shift?
Okay, we started out, uh, Councilman Green, tried to split it, but the systems did not coordinate. They have a reporting system, the city has a reporting system, and that created a problem.
So we need another resolution for that?
No, I, I, I wouldn't think so, that, because the logistics of it was worked out in taking, uh, in consideration of what the officers. What they thought would work best for them. So they, they concluded, I think it was flip-flop, wasn't it, Ms. Goldman, initially?
Sure, but that six, we had them three off six, it was off long, a long time, we didn't know when they were coming back. We actually had more officers, but at that time, we did not have full shifts because they were off.
I, I guess the reason I was asking, because I, I, to my knowledge, I guess the reason I was asking, because to my knowledge, we tied to this resolution, right?
Well, I guess, I guess if any party wanted to get out, they, they could, I mean, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but I'm, you know. I'm sure they could work something up, just like they worked out, okay, I'll help y'all to get out, you know, other things.
And, because, and this, uh, the resolution, you know, Mr. Locke, Mr. Charles, Mr. Prater, in and in two, was based on four shifts. Being that it's flip-flop or change, shouldn't there be another resolution put in place?
Yeah, I mean, resolution is really symbolic of a general consensus, it does not rise to the test of law. I believe that the, uh, prevailing circumstances was more important in making sure that we are covered at this present time. But we're, I, I'm making note of that.
Say it again, Matt.
The prevailing circumstances and having round-the-clock police protection.
Was more important, more important.
That's what's important now, so make sure our communities are safe. With round-the-clock police protection.
I think at the time that we did this resolution, we had a limited amount of officers that were actively working. We had the officer, but they weren't actively working, because someone's out on medical leave. I think we were kind of forced into a situation because we did not have the people. Now, times have changed now, it sounds like we have more officers, and I said they can cover all the shifts. But we do have more officers available now, is that a correct statement, Emma?
Well, I'm not, I'm not the chief, so I know, I know they work twelve hours shifts, so you gotta have somebody off. Where the next day they can come and work, and then you got vacations and you, you know, that takes the vacation, so.
That's why I asked, because I, 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 I thought that when we signed this resolution, that's what we tied it to, if there'd been any type of change. The resolution should have changed as well.
And I think the mayor said something, she said something important, she said at the time, the prevailing consensus. Was to, um, go with this resolution, but I think the prevailing consensus now has changed. And we want our police department open, so we may have to, I think, do a new resolution or maybe amend this one.
That's why I, I made a suggestion, a recommendation, that we need a, a few of the council meetings, then look at this resolution. And see if we can do something different or stay the same, but, uh, it needs to be looked at again.
Um. Yes, sir, Councilman Bradford. Again, back to a resolution twenty-two nineteen ninety-three, I referred to earlier about the memorandum of understanding. I, I questioned, uh, if we can get that tonight, I sure appreciate, because I might spell out a lot of the questions we have. Uh, how long are we in the contract, I, I have read it, I don't have it with me, but, uh, how long we in the contract? It doesn't mention anything about how much we'll allocate to pay the sheriff department per hour. But I noticed in the public records in the clerk office, because I received it from the clerk office. And I appreciate the council be providing with one tonight while we're in this discussion.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, okay, in revisiting everything, and we find that there. Still, we still don't have adequate coverage for twenty-four hour, with the radio room, coverage on the street. What would be your recommendation?
We just, what about making an amendment, still just doing a whole new resolution? Amendment, amend the one that you have. Because perception is everything, we, we gotta get the police department up and running, crime is shot out the roof. And perception is everything, we're sitting down at six, but we, a city of this size. We should have our police department open twenty-four hours a day, we think this tells what he's doing. But we don't wanna rush to try to open it without the manpower. But that's when we talked about opening the page and trying to do what's best for the city. Because when you talk to other people in other municipalities, we sitting down at six and crime rate is out the roof, that is, that is. That, that's just not, that's just not gonna cut it. And therefore, we always trying to come up with the best, you don't wanna just stop some right off the bat. We have to come up with a comprehensive plan to make it work, but the police, we can't keep kicking the can down the road. We've got to come up with a resolution or solution to get more manpower and have our police department open twenty-four hours a day. Along with the system of the sheriff department. Now, we, we just don't have to, that's when we're elected, we have to tackle hard issues. And it's up to us to come to some kind of conclusion, to see what's best for the city. And that's about the bottom line, and we can talk all day, but we gonna have to resolve this issue.
Okay.
Yeah, and one of, you know, I like that, uh, at the next coming meeting, like I said, this is discussion, I'd like to have Shad Mike Tub, yourself, come here. And, uh, give us a report, what he done done last year, and, uh, if he gonna continue to serve, uh, what's his plan? And, uh, what's his jurisdiction power over the parish overall, I think, being the chef of Mohawk Parish Parish, we are the biggest. Uh, municipality in the parish, I don't see why we're paying double to the sheriff department, they have a responsibility in that budget to cover. The whole Mohawk Parish, and like they cover Maruage, I think they should be to cover Bassett without a cost. I mean, there's no addition, they, they're responsible for the parish, they're, they're over the governor parish. If they can't do Collison, Maruage, but neither, but add any additional charge, why are the people in this four mile, forty half mile radius. Receiving these type of ridiculous charges?
They don't cover Maruage.
Well, they don't cover Maruage?
No, sir, we have our own police department.
Okay, but they, they cover the outside of Maruage, I just see my. Okay, I'm sorry, excuse me, but anyway, I would need to know, why can't he cover the inner city of Mohawk Parish without any additional charge? And he need to come forward to tell the board why and why not?
Any other comments?
Just mine, um, um, I think I rendered my solution earlier, since we have eight full-time officers, that was, and that was reported by Chief Reed. Let's use two of our officers per shift, let them take the lead, and we fill in with the sheriff department. That takes care of that, and we still will continue to have our revenue, see, we losing revenue too. It's safety, but we also losing a lot of revenue by letting the sheriff department take completely over this clock. So this will work both ways, they, the sheriff department will work, they'll still help us, but our people will take the lead on each shift.
Any other? Thank you, I think I have started saying, and I have been meeting with, um, staff. We've looked in all of the, the moving parts and, and looking at scenarios and looking at, um, what other municipality we want to be competitive with. We have to take into consideration if somebody's all sick, the unanticipated things that happen, if you fall short. Then we have, that's why we have an agreement in play with the sheriff's office, because we don't control them. They are political subdivision of their own, but I have made note of all of your comments. And we'll certainly take that into consideration. Okay. Thank you, that takes us to. Number six, thank you, Mr. Locke. R S Bioscience Lease O Dito Building, uh, Councilman Bradford.
Okay, before, before we go to that, I'd like to reserve a time, when she come back with the memorandum for discussion before we close, but we can move on with time, say, if you don't mind. I, I, I definitely don't wanna get away from that memorandum of understanding before the council, this job, but we can go, if you'd like to go on to, uh, six, that'll be fine. We can move, you know, keep the bottom, that's gonna be reserved, that time.
I, I have respect for everybody's time here, but if you would like to go ahead and, and start that dialogue. Rather than, because we don't know how long it's gonna take most.
Sure, yeah, sure.
We in a little trying to close our budgets, prepare our budgets, so we have a lot of things going on at the same time.
Okay, the, the Dito Building was leased, you know, the resolution twenty-one nineteen fifty-one. It was, it was leased to a, be, I mean, R S T Bioscience Lease O Dito Building. Uh, definitely wasn't really doing anything in that building at this time, for, for the last two years. Uh, we are, have that building leased for one dollar. And we are paying the utility bills, the city, when I said we, we are paying the utility bills of fifty-five dollars a month. And we leasing that building for one dollar a year, now, I'm concerned about liability and safety at that location, that is the city property. We, uh, we all know we had an incident to have there in a truck, we have two or three semi trucks parked, parked on the property. My question, who give them authorization, and, and leased to some Texas. Texas Bay Corporation with no address, uh, would you ever find address for them?
I do have an address, I'm in Birmingham, but I do this somewhere in Texas, I can't remember, but I do have it, if I do have insurance.
Okay, they have insurance date, uh, this, this company, uh, while we maintaining and paying their utilities. For this particular company, uh, we paying six hundred dollars a year, and they only, we only collecting twelve dollars a year. At a month, they rate a dollar, and that's not financially feasible, and like I said, then we have liability, like I say. I went around the building, the building is open in the back, we're only cutting the front of it. I mean, we got manpower that we could because in the communities we're, and we're, we're maintaining a building that leased to a out-of-state-based company in Texas. And, uh, the lease itself, it's not what the paper is written on, because it's not notarized by, not in the state of Texas. And it's, they, they, this is an option to purchase, this is not a regular lease, but when you talk about a purchase, Louisiana law requires. That if out-of-state corporation buy a property in Louisiana, they must notarize that property, that contract in their state as well. Uh, I'm just wondering why we are generating, you know, taking the liability, because if something happened on the property, you know, they have insurance, although it's current or not. Uh, they have insurance, uh, we need to really be able to inspect our property. Because we know it been vacant for two years, and we know that we have three semi trucks parked on it, we know that we have potholes. We know that it's open in the back, some of those in the front, and we also know that children are playing on it. We're leaving ourselves in a position for, for a lawsuit, just a matter of time, because if something happened on that property. And was parking right their vehicle up on the parking lot, and tap the bottom of, we're responsible for it, not the home-based Texas, uh, crack up, but the lease. It's, the lease is, I never seen the lease, I'm honest with you, the lease don't say who you smuggling for, what? Uh, uh, what's their responsibility, was our responsibility, but I did find out that the city of Bassett. Is paying the utility bills some forty-five, fifty-five dollars a month. And, uh, I think that's a waste of public, uh, funding, and, uh, I think we should be able to inspect that building that traditionally. Because a lot of things been going on over there, for the sake of ourselves, maybe officers, and maybe some of the board member, whoever the mayor decided to go. Or who we decide to go over there, I think that need to be really looked into right away. We had a couple incidents, and gonna, we gonna keep leading on and on, and we gonna find ourselves in a big lawsuit.
Can we see if we can get out of that lease?
Wait, wait, talk to me, Matt.
That, uh, Mr. Locke out, Mr. Locke, would you repeat what you're stating?
Is it anyway, I know that lease is up in, uh, June, two hours and twenty-six.
Yes, sir.
Can we get out of that lease?
Okay, let me, let me entertain all of your comments, and I'll just do a quick summary, okay? Mr. Locke's question is in reference to the lease. Mr. Bradford, yours is in late reference to the liability. Okay.
And the, and the lease, man.
And the lease, okay.
My question is, is, is it regards to their intention?
Yeah.
Is, they, do they still intend to do with, what they need to do with, at the time of the, uh, the lease?
Okay, is there another?
I, I wanna ask, Ms. Gold, could you, uh, provide us tonight with that address of their company and that insurance company, please?
I can, and the insurance is through, uh, Thomas and, and my lady. And they got, I got a certificate of, uh, uh, insurance, and it's good through the last few days of June of this year. Right now, they haven't renewed it, because I can't check.
Okay, what is, what is that base, uh, corporation, uh, physical address, where, where they located in Texas?
I have to go look.
Oh, okay, I thought you said you had the address.
I do, it's in my office.
Could you get that question, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay, are there any other, uh?
When was Mr. Green? When was, when was they physically on the property last, and if they made any progress as to doing what they said they was gonna lease it for?
Well, we still in, uh, the lease, what if they being on the property or not?
No, I'm, I'm asking that for a reason, you wanna get out of the lease, so if you get out of the lease, you gotta have a valid reason. So if they ain't doing nothing what they said they was gonna do with it, that'll be a valid reason to void the lease. That's why I asked the question, if they just, they just leased it and let it grow up, we just, we can, we can give that to somebody else. And hopefully, they'll put a business there, if they just got the building, just occupied the building for a dollar a year, I mean, whatever it is, twelve dollars a year. I would hold on to it too. That's what I'm saying, you gotta have a valid reason to break the lease though.
They have to pay the insurance, that's the valid reason.
Okay, did I hear Mr. D Green, did I hear you? Okay, Mr. Jay Green, okay, tomorrow night? Mr. Bradford, Mr. Cap?
Yeah, on, on the lease, uh, I think the question was, could we, uh, get out of the lease, first of all, I think. Once we get our attorney on board, once, once we get our budget in July, I don't think that gonna be a problem breaking this lease. Once you look at the Louisiana law, say, it's not a valid lease, that's one reason we get out, it's not a valid, according to Louisiana law, Louisiana law required. it's not a valid lease, that's one reason we get out, it's not a valid lease, according to Louisiana law, Louisiana law require, I said again, anytime a corporation purchase, this is a lease with options to purchase, anytime a out-of-state corporation purchases property in another state, they must notarize this form in the front of the state of Texas, it's only notarized here in the state of Louisiana. And, uh, that's one, our attorney will take care of that in the future. But that, that's something we'll, we, we can go forward, I think we can get out of the lease.
Any other comments, or, or, Mr. Bradford? Well, that being said, we're already looking into the lease in previous administration with their wisdom entered into this lease agreement, I was not here at that point, there are a lot of questions that I have as well, and there has been interest expressed, serious interest in this building, but because it is tied up at the present moment until twenty twenty-six, that, that, that kinda ties our hand until we have to add some legal, um, out. And as I said, I don't mean it in a condescending way. Previous administration in their wisdom entered into this agreement for whatever was specific in, in the interest at that time. Okay, uh, that's item number six. Yes, sir, uh, Mr. Bradford, you want to revisit what we all already discussed in reference to the sheriff department?
Yeah, uh, this memorandum, we start this very back page, I notice it, it's not dated, and it don't have any specific amount, anytime you enter into a contract or memorandum, should definitely, excuse me, have, have, hey, have a date, don't have the amount. I'm sorry, don't have a mount, uh, what they're charging, that's open season, I think, I mean, that's one question that the council seemed to be concerned about. Of what, uh, what they're charging us per hour, again, I think that our officer, Shad Mike Tub, maybe will come in, give us some clarity, because, and again, I think you said this lease is due until, if, if they, if we don't have our problem solved, they can continue, this, this rotates over to the following year. Uh, other what I feel we've been set up already for next year in this memorandum, we need to get some clarity, what, you know, what do it stop? I guess that's, what do our officers receive a decent salary, and what can we recruit at a decent salary? But we can go forward as Mr. the Pal, we wanna be like other cities, but neither in Maruage and everybody else have our own police department. Uh, that, that's all I can say about that, because it's not dated, and I don't, I don't think it's supposed to be, you know?
Thank you, sir.
I mean, not no amount.
Say any other comments? I made note, I know there are a lot of things, a lot of questions, but there are some details that, that, you mentioned the date. We didn't know how long it would take. Uh, you mentioned the amount, you have different officers at different salaries, so it's hard to put a specific amount. But I made note of all of your comments, thank you so much.
I want to, I want to get that address from Ms. Gold, she actually came back.
She can give you, she can.
Okay, I thought maybe everybody might want, I'm, I'm not sure. Did you have that, uh, address, Ms. Gold?
I did, I'll take him for me.
Okay. I show appreciate.
Okay, uh, thank you so much, uh, at this time, and, and, and let me just say this, I think that rather than having all the council members calling and inquiring about a lease, I, I, I actually do, I caution you to think about that, even though Ms. Goldman is gonna provide you with that information as requested.
And you would think that would be.
If anyone is interested in calling that company, let us let it emerge out of the administrative.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to make sure, I can, I can find out who the other I called, though.
Okay.
I just wanna know where they located, they're legit, they're on file, which is, uh, such a state of, uh, Texas.
Yes, sir, you have that, Ms. Goldman?
I do have the address, but they're not from, actually, in, from Texas, they're in Oklahoma, I'm looking at the address.
Oh, my, the, the lease in Texas, huh?
Well, I'm sure with Mr. Pierre about this resolution, he probably thought it was Texas.
Well, let me have the address, and we'll start there, we will measure Texas.
All right, well, there being no further comments, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Probably with Mr. D Green, second by Mrs. Tapp, all, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carried, this meeting is adjourned.